Let's call this meeting of the Windsocket City Council with the order for Monday, December 5th, 2022. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Gillette.
Here.
Councilwoman Sierra.
Here.
Councilman Susi.
Here.
President Ward.
Here. Honored being a quorum president, if you'd all please stand for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
God our Father, we ask that you send your blessing upon this city and upon this council. Guide us in our efforts, increase our motivation, and strengthen our resolve to build a better community and ensure a brighter future for the city of Windsocket. This we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is public hearings, first being a public hearing on the application of a BV liquor license by Yao Inc., DBA Fuji Sushi Asian Cuisine, 1730 Diamond Hill Road. Is there anyone here to appear on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, good evening. My name is Andrea. I'm the paralegal of Attorney Chris Comer's office. Tonight I will present the applicant. Standing next to me is Mr. Wayne, Mr. Quinn Huen. He is the president and the proposed manager of the applicant, Yoke Inc., DBA Fuji Sushi Asian Cuisine. The proposed restaurant is formerly the Pizza Hut restaurant establishment. We are taking over the Pizza Hut and going to be modeling to be the brand new high-class Japanese and Asian cuisine, serving Asian-Japanese fusion food. Our proposed seating capacity will be 57 seats inside the restaurant and 20 seats outside patio seating. Hours of operation will be 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. from Monday to Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. from Friday to Saturday, and Sunday will be 11:30 to 10:00 p.m. The applicant, Mr. Quinn Huen, has more than 20 years' experience in the restaurant industry. He currently owns three restaurants in Massachusetts, one in Marlboro, one in Walpro, Lawford, and Aldersbroughs, Massachusetts. So we are happy to answer the question. If anyone in the board have any question concern?
While this being a public hearing, we will just take testimony. Then if there are questions, we ask them when it comes time for approval of the license. But thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Is there anyone here to address this particular application? If not, thank you. You may want to stay. We'll be finishing with this shortly. The second public hearing is an application of a first-class vicualling license by Jay's Deli at 760 Cumberland Hill Road. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant or anyone else interested in making comment? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Canoya, seconded by Councilman Gillette to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the public hearing is closed. Next items are the agenda for board of licensed commissioners.
22LC44, application of class BV liquor license by Yao Inc. doing business as Fuji Sushi Asian Cuisine at 1730 Diamond Hill Road.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoya, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Any discussion or any questions for the applicants?
Just want to say, Mr. President, just want to say welcome. I love Japanese food. You'll see me there soon. Thank you.
I too want to echo that sentiment, welcome, and though I've only had sushi once in my life, maybe I'll be convinced to try it again.
Thank you very much. And not only sushi, we also serve very good, high-quality Chinese food too.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the application, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. You are approved.
Thank you so much and have a good one, everyone. Thank you.
22LC45, application of first-class vicualling license by Jay's Deli at 760 Cumberland Hill Road.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Canoya and Councilwoman Sierra. We'll take Councilman Canoya as the second this time. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it, and the application is approved.
22LC46, application of licenses and renewal of licenses.
Mr. President, for the last time, I'm making a motion to approve the following licenses: An amendment for Class D liquor, also new licenses for Class F1 liquor with entertainment, also renewals for holiday, quarterly entertainment, vicualling first class and vicualling second class.
Motion to approve by Councilman Gillette, seconded by Councilman Canoya. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it, and the applications are approved. Consent agenda. Is there anyone that wants any particular items from the consent agenda removed for consideration? Oh, I'm sorry. Gee, how could that happen? I skipped public comment. Public comment, is there anyone here who would like to address the council? Please step up, identify yourselves, and you will be heard.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Sharon, and I live on Park Avenue in Windsocket. I'm wearing black because I think it's a funeral of what I thought was a good city when I moved here. I really feel bad about that. I really feel bad that the city's going to die because we don't have anybody standing up for us. I feel bad that I live in a half-a-million-dollar house, from what I understand, and I can't even raise my rents because I have tenants that deal drugs. I feel bad for a lot of things. I do want to thank the city council members who will no longer be with us as of tomorrow. I think you guys did what you were supposed to do. You did your job. And I think if the same thing came up with our next city council, I don't think any of them has the brass ones to do the right thing. I think they're all living in a dreamland of Baldelliville. What I do want to say is I don't know what our recourse would be at that point if they don't do their job. I don't know who we go to to do what I know that they won't be doing, get in or out of the position. The only other thing I really, oh, so I left you guys all a little gift. Try a tiny reflection of how I feel about you, how I appreciate you, and you too, I got coal. I also want to say that, Mr. Mancieri, you mentioned when you were sitting over there a few weeks ago, when you were trying to call me out, that we were getting this, you know, us poll workers were making this, you know, good money on those days that we worked the polls from 5:30 in the morning when I have to be here till 9:00 when I leave. I just want you guys to know, finance department should be run by a bunch of second graders because we still haven't gotten paid. Now, most of the poll workers are people that are retired or handicapped or whatever, that don't have full-time jobs. This extra 100 and like, I think it's like 100 and, I don't know. It's not a lot of money. I think it averages out less than $14 an hour. Well, we don't have it. It's been a month. We don't have it. We're getting an email almost every other day from next door that, oh, finance department's having problems. They don't know how to use their equipment or something, and now it's the bank's fault. It's always somebody else's fault, but that, you know, that good money that we made for that day, Garrett, we still don't have it. Thank you, and thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to address the council? Why, yes, there is.
Good evening, everyone. Astell Bubble, 648 Third Avenue, Windsocket. I want to say thank you for all of you that are not returning. You did your job, and that's all we ask. You followed the law. You did what you had to do. And hopefully, the next council does the same. And you know what? I wouldn't change the charter one bit because, you know what? We had not had one mayor in this city until now to go to the edge of saying, you know, I'm going to do this, and she'll do it again. On another note, I hope everyone has a nice Merry Christmas, New Year's, and please be safe. And I also worked at the polls and still waiting for my check so I can go Christmas shopping, which I haven't gotten that yet either, and we don't know how long it's going to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tammy Irwin, 24 Bennett Street. This is pertaining to the ordinance entitled Traffic. I've been in business for 10 years on 91 Main Street, which is right across from the Mullen parking lot. And recently, the parking has become completely out of control. There's absolutely no parking for my customers. I've had customers contacting me saying they went, wanted to come to my establishment, but there was no parking in the lot. A lot of my customers are older and not able to walk long distances to come to my store. I'm really starting to lose customers because of this. And it's become a ripple effect over the street. Just the other day, the mailman, he couldn't even deliver my mail until the end of the day because there was nowhere for him to park his vehicle. And if you notice, when you go down Main Street, you'll see delivery trucks parked in the middle of the street because there's nowhere to park. Even my loading zone, because that parking lot is so full, they're parking in the loading zone all day long. So now the trucks that come to make deliveries, they can't make deliveries, so they have to park in the middle of the street. So I'm hoping that you're able to designate a row of parking in the Miller, the Mullen parking lot to help the businesses. And it's not only me, it's many other businesses. I'm just the only one that showed up to things, so, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to address the council?
Good evening. Chris Beauchamp, 37 Meadow Road, Windsocket. First of all, I'd like to thank all the people involved with the stroll. Went to Wonderland. They did a tremendous job under tough circumstances, switching from Saturday to Sunday. I thought it was a great success, and you guys should be commended for that. I'm going to keep everything positive because I didn't get the memo about a funeral, but I'm going to keep everything positive. I'd like to thank you all for your service, those who are not returning. It's not easy sitting up there and putting yourself and your family through difficulties. I know that, being that I've been there before. Unfortunately, we have people that just want to turn everything negative. I've lived in this city all my life. There's a lot of great things in this city. But comments like she just made, we do not need. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to address the council?
Good evening. Shirley Robinson, 719 Front Street. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just wanted to say thank you to most of my friends. I'm going to say the mayor, Deeng Gendron, Roger Gillette, Denise Sierra, Jim Canoya, and John Ward, who's staying on board. And we still have two other council people. Congratulations. Congratulations to all the new people. Yes, Mr. Beauchamp, we need to keep it positive. That goes for everybody. Not one, but everybody. So we will miss you. Merry Christmas, and that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the council? One more time, anyone else want to address the council? If not, we will move on. Next item, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda, or are there items to be removed? The discussion.
Make a motion to approve as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Canoya, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Again, any items to be removed? If not, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the ayes have it. Consent agenda is approved. Next item is the minutes. Approval and correction of the minutes of the regular meeting held on November 21st, 2022.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoya, seconded by Councilman Susi. Any discussion or corrections on the minutes as submitted? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved as submitted. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrances.
22P49, request of Councilman Canoy to address the following: One, the Windsocket City Charter and suggestions by certain parties that it is antiquated and needs to be amended as a result of the removal, of the mayoral removal hearings that occurred in the first week of October 2022.
Madam Clerk, thank you. So I just put this on, and I'll be brief. You know, I did hear after the meeting, the removal hearings, there was a lot of consternation in the city, and understandably so. There wasn't a, wasn't a good time for anybody, I'm sure. But I heard a number of comments from people suggesting that the city charter was, quote, "antiquated" for some reason, as a result of what we've had in place for close to 70 years. And just want to remind people, antiquated, you know, the charter didn't call for the city to remove an elected official, whoever that elected official was, and put him in a stock and stone them or burn them at the stake. You heard some folks here tonight, and put aside some of the, and put aside some of the specific comments, but there was a question that was raised, so what do you do if there's an issue? And that's a fair question, and that's why this provision exists in this charter because, you know, you cannot remove somebody just willy-nilly. And the, it's pretty clear, you have to actually reach some threshold. And there are provisions that, there with me a moment here? That go along with that removal, okay? And the most important one is the willful violation of any provision of the charter or ordinances. So as distasteful as it may have felt and seemed, there needs to be a mechanism when we have elected officials, be it the mayor, the city council, whomever, that decides they're going to thumb their nose at the charter or our city ordinances. And when you have an ordinance, and you have, you know, provisions of the charter that require the mayor, whoever the mayor is, to see that the terms and conditions imposed in any contract are faithfully kept and performed. So once we have a contract, it's going to be faithfully kept and performed. And that was not the case, unfortunately. That was the biggest issue that was before us. So I appreciate that some people are upset. Perfectly understandable. But I would caution that cooler heads should prevail, and you don't have knee-jerk reactions to rare events. Again, the removal provisions in this, in this city charter, again, require the willful violation of any provision of the charter or ordinances. So if that was not the case, I can assure you, whoever was being removed would have been in Superior Court the very next day. But as it turns out, that did not happen. They went to the Supreme Court originally, and the Supreme Court looked at all their arguments that were made, and after careful review, denied them all. That tells you something. Denied them all. So again, I just, as I leave here this evening with no regrets whatsoever, I just, I would, I would implore my colleagues that will remain and the new folks coming on, as well as the public, to be thoughtful and considerate in terms of exactly what changes they're going to make and not overreact. Because again, I can't say it strongly enough, there is a hurdle. You cannot be removed just because I don't like someone or just because someone has a different philosophy or a different view. There are specific innumerable items, the most important of which is you cannot violate the charter and/or the ordinances. And we had, the former mayor was here with two attorneys for a period of time, and frankly, was unable to point to a single provision of the charter or any case law that supported the position they had on the police contract, which was unfortunate. Didn't, we didn't need to, never should have gotten to the point we did, but it is what it is. So I will leave it at that. I would like to add something to the agenda for discussion, but I'll wait till we get through the rest of the, this remonstrance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
22P50, request of Vice President, of President Ward to address the following: Recognition of the Terms of Service to my fellow council members.
Whichever is fine. First, in recognizing terms of service to my fellow council members, I'm going to recognize a term of service about someone other than our fellow council members, and that's John D. Simone. I had to be convinced to agree for you to be the city solicitor. It was something that was not clear to me until we spoke, had a chance to go over what you were bringing to the table, what my expectations were, and we came to an agreement. And I have to say, despite my reluctance at first, I now, however many years later it is, six, six years later, I have to say it was the best decision I ever made. I've said it before, the solicitor for the city doesn't work for the mayor, doesn't work for the council, doesn't work for the boards and commissions. They work for the law. law. We all ask for opinions, guidance, and assistance, and you give us your experience, your understanding, and your knowledge of the law and case law to go with it, because we don't often have that reference. I have had disagreements with you. You have advised me I've got it wrong. You have advised me I've got it right. But in all cases, I always felt like you were telling me the truth about your understanding of the law. You quoted sections that were valid, that I agreed with, and some things that I missed. And so I think your contribution here has been very important, very helpful and beneficial to the best interests of the city, and I want to thank you for the service that you've given to Wensocket. As for the rest of you guys, Roger, it's been a long time. You started when, in 1920, what? 19 what? What was it?
Not my birth date. It's the day I started, you want to find.
Which year did you start on the council?
I forget. It was on and off in 18 years. I forget the first time.
Well, a long, long time ago, Roger Gillette got elected in the special election.
It was.
And he's been here on and off, and he's always worked for the people, many of the people who we don't often hear. Roger Gillette speaks to and meets with every day, whether it was at his flower shop, or just going to the senior center, or, or visiting folks. And as I said, we don't all always meet everybody, but Roger met with some of the people we didn't see, or hear. And he'd bring their message and their needs to the, to the community and the council, and you did it diligently and respectfully for many years. And I want to thank you for the years of service to the city, from myself. I'm fortunate to be coming back. You were not, but for all the years, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you for the kind words.
Nice. Sierra, same message to you. You've worked here quite as long. You may be back. One never knows. But I, I know you were passionate about the things you believe in, and you express them strongly and clearly, and you bring ideas, again, that's the others don't necessarily have, and we share them, and we come to agreement, and we move on those matters. And you've done it with dignity and effectively for the years you've been on the council, and I want to thank you for the service as well. It's been very important, and it's been, it's been a, a place to bring ideas and share them and gain consensus and come to conclusions and pass good legislation. So thank you for your help and your service to the community. Jim Canoye. How many years have you been on now?
That'd be six.
Six. Yikes. It seems so much longer. I, I have to express that your, your, your work on the budget, your financial acumen, your ability to find things that often others can't find in, in a set of numbers, and things that I can't find in a set of numbers, and bringing it to balance has been critical to the success for the city financially, for the taxpayers especially. Sometimes it can be, as I like to say about myself sometimes, like a ball peen hammer to the bridge of your nose. It can hurt and make you go ow, but it gets, makes you aware. And you've been very good at making people in this city aware of your feelings and, and your principles, and your belief in the city, and in belief in doing the job right. And you're sometimes taking harsh positions and hard positions. But you've also been extremely good at helping me out when I've been writing legislation, in terms of just editing and expressing ideas and sharing ideas about them and helping to make them a better piece of legislation. And I think for that effort and for your knowledge and experience and everything you've brought to the table, I want to thank you, and wish you the best for the two years you have off. Right?
A minute.
And look forward to seeing you over at the other side of the podium over there, when I'm sure you'll come back to express your opinions. Mayor Gendron, Council President Gendron, Councilmember Gendron, it's been many years since we started doing this together. Sad to see that you're leaving under these circumstances. Again, you're a person of passion. You believe in the city. You've worked hard for the people in the city of Wensocket. You've worked well with the members of the council to help us with legislation and to move agendas. And again, hear, hear the voices of different people in the city that some of the rest of us don't hear, and bring it to us. You're both passionate and compassionate, and I think it shows. And I hope you enjoy two years off, and look forward to hearing from you again. But I just, for my part, want to thank you for everything you've contributed, what you've done, what you've brought to the council, your leadership as a council president. And, and then, as I said, wrapping it all up, I hope in thanking you, I can look forward to maybe your continued participation in the city and in city government in the future. As a person who was asked to leave and then invited back, I have expectations that the same may occur for each of you. So best of luck in the future, and again, thank you for the service.
Thank you.
That's it, Madam Clerk, for me.
Thank you. 22 P. 51, a request of Mayor Gendron to address the city council regarding the following items. One, the state of the city of Wensocket regarding personnel developments and accomplishments, including but not limited to, and we'll let the mayor continue with the rest.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Council President. If I could, Council President, before I begin, could I ask if somebody could make a motion to add three items to the agenda that I will be discussing that were inadvertently?
If you would tell us what those might be.
It will be the police contract, the police chief's contract, and the water treatment plant.
Is there a motion to add those to the?
Make a motion to add those three items pursuant to 42466B, for discussion purposes only.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Canoye, seconded by Councilman Gillette. Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the ayes have it. Council, Mayor Gendron.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues, for adding that to the agenda. So first of all, I'd like to say, I have been given a great opportunity. Over the past few months as mayor, I was given a very different perspective, which allowed me to really understand the inner workings of city hall, city government, and working with the city employees. The city of Wensocket employees have been great to work with, a very professional group of people that helped me to stabilize city services through this turbulent time in our city. I have enjoyed this time, and I hope the feeling with them was mutual. I would like to personally thank a few very special individuals, Director D'Agostino, Director Plais, Director Chamberlain, Director DeRoyce, Director Gillette, Solicitor D. Simone, and City Clerk Harmon. Each of you were put in a very difficult position with the removal of the former mayor. Each of you could have cast me aside and left me to flounder in this building without knowing what to do. But each of you, in your own special way, stepped up, helped me, and guided me where I needed to be. And for that, I am grateful. Moving on now to some of the other insight that I received while being in city hall as mayor. We have a serious problem that will be facing the future council more than it has faced us, because it is a compounding problem. And that is the absence of a full-time assessor, a full-time tax assessor, and the difficulties that come along with that absence. We have serious issues ahead, more monumental than I ever expected, looking from the outside as a city councilor into city government. We have had issues that are long overdue for resolution. We had scheduled an assesses, I'm sorry, we scheduled a, an appeal session for the appeals of tax assessments, and our part-time tax assessor was not able to attend, did not attend, and forced that meeting to be canceled. When you look at the assessment statement, the assessor's statement of assessed values for fiscal, for tax levy year 2021, the statement was not certified. Worse though, for 2022, not only was it not certified, it wasn't even signed. So right now, this city is operating with many violations, the worst being operating without an assesses statement of assessed values that is signed and certified. While I was here as mayor, working with the other directors, we interviewed two very qualified tax assessors. Both looked like they could fit the bill, would be exactly what the city needed. But after we offered them the position, they both refused and declined the position due to the current conditions that they say are looming in city hall in the assessors department. I brace you for what is coming, because I don't think that we, as a present council, was ever updated to the seriousness of this problem. And I know that you probably aren't aware of it yet, but it is coming. Regarding future developments and accomplishments while I've been in office, well, we were able to purchase the All Saints Church property. We sold off the former middle school. Since I have been on the city council, that has been a goal, to liquidate that property. After the city council hired a real estate broker agent to market excess surplus property in the city, he was able to receive an offer and finally close a sale for the sale of the former middle school for $1 million. Another issue, the looming water bills that everybody has been anticipating, finally were mailed out. Because of the hard work of the people at the water department, and the billing cycle people, and the finance department, they were able to navigate through a very difficult process, and we were able to get those bills mailed out. And I think everybody should have by this time received their water bills. While I've been here in city hall, we also put together an RFP to go out for new billing services for water and sewer. The RFP is currently listed, and we'll be looking for respondents to that RFP, to hopefully provide the new council with a much better billing service than we had to muddle through over the last couple of months. I've also opened up city hall, returning it to pre-pandemic status. Everyone, city hall is open, and everybody is welcome. This is your city hall. This is your building. Please come here, conduct business, visit the wonderful employees, and make it yours. Regarding housing of our unhoused residents, Director Plais has exhibited care and compassion like I've never seen before, helping our most vulnerable residents. She greets them, she meets them, she does what she can to get them into a more stable environment, all the while looking up to them with honor, knowing that she's helping some of this society's greatest people. And she does it with a smile. The city council has also renewed the hotel voucher system, which worked so well last year. We extended it slightly, starting it on December 3rd and extending it out until April 30th. And with the council's approval, Director Plais signed that agreement, and we are now housing people already at the Wensocket Motor Inn and funding that project with ARPA funds. The police contract, a lot of people thought that that was excessive, because that is ultimately what caused the removal hearings. That is ultimately what brought down the former administration. It's unfortunate, could have been avoided, but it was wrong, because our police department deserved the benefits of the contract that was negotiated for them, with them. It was negotiated legally and approved by this council unanimously. And since I've been mayor, it has been executed completely. And they are now being paid fairly, and hopefully enough to keep them all on board. We also provided the police chief with a three-year contract. There is an ordinance that requires that three-year contract, and he has never worked with a contract yet. So as mayor, I made sure that he was under contract. And with the approval of the city council unanimously, he was given a three-year contract. So thank you for recognizing his value. Now, as a general farewell to my colleagues, Councilman Gillette, defender of the senior citizens, always took the high road, but always watched out for your fellow senior citizens. And that's a value that none of us could bring to this table. So thank you. You've done so much more, but I think nobody can speak their appreciation more for what you've done than the senior citizens of this city. And I thank you for them. Councilwoman Sierra, animal lover, business lover. You fought to develop and improve our animal shelter because of your love for animals. You supported and always defended businesses in the city. You were the sole author of the legislation to eliminate the liquor license fees during the pandemic, because you knew that the businesses were struggling as it was. Imposing a $1,000 fee was only going to make it worse. And with your leadership, this council supported you in eliminating that fee. So on their behalf, and from me, I thank you. Councilman Canoye, you thug, creator of the omnibus budget amendment, and supporter of all components of it, from every councilor that sat on the side of you. I thank you for your tenacity and integrity. The residents of the city of Wensocket benefit from those efforts, to the tune of a 9% decrease in the levy over the years that you sat on this council. You didn't do it alone, but you led the council to do what was best for the taxpayers. And for them and from me, I thank you. Councilman Ward, municipal finance expert, you've brought insight and perspective to the city council with historic knowledge, integrity, and wisdom that comes from your years in municipal government. The people of Wensocket have benefited greatly because of what you've been able to provide off the top of your head sometimes at a meeting, when so many of us have to go back and look up information. I remember my first time walking, when I was campaigning, I walked with you, Council- I remember my first time walking when I was campaigning, I walked with you, Councilman, and we went door to door, and we got elected together. So on behalf of the taxpayers in the city and me, I thank you. Counselors Suce and Gonzalez, I have enjoyed my time serving with you. I think one of the greatest moments that I appreciated your time was participating in what was probably an uncomfortable endeavor, but a so necessary event, and that was the unanimous vote to provide our hard-working police department with a contract. I know it wasn't easy, but I think you both knew it was necessary, and on behalf of the police department and on behalf of me, I want to thank you, because it was important. I'd like to go back for a minute now and just tell people a personal thing about Dan Gendron. When I first got on the council, I had one goal in mind. I didn't know if I would be here for one term, three terms, six terms, I had no idea. But the one thing I said that I wanted to accomplish while I was here was the construction of a new water treatment plant in the city of Windsocket. And I fought. I fought many people, I fought experts in the water field, I fought with mayors who thought it best to locate the water treatment plant in North Smithfield. We fought through two administrations. The first, buying the location, buying the property for the new water treatment plant, and the second that tried to reverse that purchase and go back to the North Smithfield location. But with perseverance and assistance from colleagues on the Water Advisory Committee and colleagues like Chris Beauchamp, who stood by me and stood with us to make sure that the plant was located in the right location where it was best for the city of Windsocket. But most importantly, Director D'Agostino, you believed in me, you never criticized me, you always supported me, and you made it happen. And with your leadership and your work with the professionals that built that water treatment plant, we have a state-of-the-art facility. And for that, the recipients of the water of this city and I, thank you, Councilman Beauchamp, and you, Director D'Agostino, for standing with me and the rest of my colleagues that voted along the way for the water treatment plant, because I accomplished the most important goal that I set while my term on the city council was in. A greeting to my new colleagues or new counselors. Remain independent thinkers. You each bring a lot to the table. You come from different areas, different venues, you have a lot to offer. Stay independent, ask questions, demand answers, make fact-based, honest decisions, always keeping the city's best interest in mind. I wish each and every one of you the best of luck, and I will make myself available, publicly or quietly, if you'd rather not people know. I will always be available if you have any concerns or just want to know what we did in the past. I bring some history, not like John Ward, but I bring some history that might be of value to you someday. I'm always available to you if you need me. And with that, I'd like to thank my family. They sacrificed the most, and I thank them. But I'd like to end by thanking the Windsocket residents. I've enjoyed my time as councilman, council president, and mayor. I've always given you my best. I will continue to be available if needed, and I thank you all for your support throughout the years. And with that, I'd like to say this is a great city I call home. Good luck and best to everyone. Have a Merry Christmas.
Unfinished business of previous meetings.
22064, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and bargain collectively with local 732 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Councilman Canoya.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Discussion. I would like to simply point out again, as I did, I believe, the last time in the first passage, that this authorization is something that comes out of history and comes out of state law, where the authority to collectively bargain rests with the body, that the body or person in each community who is authorized to set wages, or as we say in our charter, fixed compensation, which rests with the city council. So in order for anybody to negotiate, they have to negotiate on our behalf, and therefore must be authorized by this council to do that, and that's what this does with the firefighters. I have heard it said that Councilman Canoya, in having conversations with various people to come to a conclusion that he could bring a resolution to the council for the full council's approval to submit to the police department for contract ratification was somehow illegal and therefore made the contract illegal, but in fact, that's not the case at all. Any person can have conversations with anyone, but only this body can approve a submission of an offer to a collective bargaining group in order to attempt to settle a contract. And so regardless of what Councilman Canoya may have done, whether with that one or this one or any other collective bargaining agreement, it had no authority and no power until he brought it to the full council, which in that case unanimously approved that offer being presented, and it was subsequently approved and ratified. So this is, this is basically the process to authorize the mayor or designate to negotiate on behalf of the city council to come to a conclusion and develop a satisfactory collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters union. And I look forward to having the administration work on a contract negotiation with their representation and come to the council with a proposal for ratification, subject to a review of all of the changes and a financial disclosure of the effect of those changes, a public hearing, and a subsequent ratification vote, and that's all this is about. It's not to do anything other than as was required by law. So I would urge that we pass this for the second time and make it so. Any other discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoya.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Gillette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra.
Yes.
Councilman Suce.
Yes.
President Ward.
Yes. And the ordinance passes for the second time. Sorry about that.
Okay. 22065, providing family health care coverage to part-time tax assessor Elise Parry.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoya, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Discussion.
Council President.
Councilman Canoya. You know, I voted for this in the affirmative at the last meeting. I'm going to be very honest with you, I'm struggling right now whether to vote in the affirmative this time. The mayor indicated that Ms. Parry, our part-time assessor, was unable to attend the long-awaited appeal hearings with the Board of Assessment Review. I don't think it was a matter of unable to attend, I think it was a matter of chose not to attend, and I have a real problem with that. We've got all kinds of appeals backed up, we talked about that the last time, hundreds of them from the last cycle. We finally have a meeting scheduled, and Ms. Parry chose not to attend because she wasn't satisfied with not yet having officially family health care, which is nobody's fault up here. Ms. Parry chose to take the job as a part-time assessor with single health care and an hourly rate to work 20 hours a day, 20 hours a week, and I mean, this is just... Mayor.
Yes.
Has our part-time assessor spent any time at City Hall since you've been in the building since October 6th?
None.
That's, that's an issue. Again, we hear that this claim that, you know, is a problem, Mr. De Simone, our solicitor, isn't here for more than two hours a day, which isn't true, but let's just say it is, that was a big issue. Solicitors not, I need a solicitor here more than two hours a day, but we don't have a tax assessor or even a part-time assessor that shows up just briefly to give some direction, to have some conversation with the staff, et cetera. I mean, this is, this is crazy, Tom, and, you know, he, the mayor alluded to the issues that are, that are brewing, and I'm going to add something to the agenda, just want to comment on it after we get through this, but this is nuts. You know, it's not asking much for an individual that's been being paid a pretty darn good hourly rate of 70 bucks an hour, has been provided health care, isn't all queued up to get, quote, "family health care," and they call a day and a half before the meeting and say, "I'm not, I'm not showing up because I don't have my family health care yet," even though there's unfortunately, there's a process, there's an ordinance on the books, you have to go through the ordinance. And I'm afraid that we continue to use this individual as a crutch, because it's convenient. So we never get, get around to doing what we really need to do, because this individual clearly does not want to work as a tax assessor full-time or anything close to full-time. So I am, I'm struggling to, to vote in the affirmative of this, but I'll leave it at that for now, maybe somebody will tell me otherwise.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Suce.
Just an observation, because we're on that precipice, that cliff that we're going to fall off, I, I, you know, if this, it's what we have right now, is this particular person. There's been efforts to get a full-time assessor, as we all know, but the reality is, I mean, I hate to be the responsible potties up here, to lose the one person that's still doing some work for us because of some technicality here, you know? It's not, it's not, I just, if it's going to keep her here for a little bit longer and get at least some of the job done while we look for a full-time assessor, I mean, and if she doesn't do the job moving forward, we can always, can always, you know, we can always do something later on. I just, as maybe painful as it might feel, I think, in this case, I don't think we have much of a choice if we, if we don't want to put ourselves in more jeopardy, and that's just my, my take. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Council President. Can I?
Mayor.
Thank you.
The charter says you can speak on any issue you believe is important to the city of Windsocket.
Thank you. I just want to say, I, I tend to agree with Councilman Suce, but I don't know that we're getting anything done.
That's tough, yeah.
It's, I, I, and Councilman Canoya said, made a comment as a, using her as a crutch. So I would have been happy to have that crutch for the last two months. I would have welcomed the crutch, because we could have gotten, the finance director could have clearly gotten some of the backlog cleared up. I tried to use the crutch to hold a hearing to get rid of some of the backlog that the finance director has been desperate to clean up. But as Councilman Canoya says, a day and a half before the hearing, we're notified that she was not coming, and that we would have to find somebody else. We can't find somebody that will work for us full-time, there is nobody that you're going to get for a hearing that knows nothing about the city. But since October 6th, I have not seen her here once. I've asked what we're getting done, but I can tell you, the appeals are backing up, and nothing is getting done. So as much as I agree with you, and I think the prudent thing to do is to get a little bit of work done, but I don't see anything, so I just wanted to add that to the discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Councilman Gillette.
How is she being paid as a salary?
She's, is, can I say direct solicitor?
Yeah, that's public record.
Okay. She's being paid $70 an hour, and every week she turns in a slip with her hours that she worked, apparently from home.
And you verified the fact that she did work? I think this is, this issue needs to be tabled, and the next council needs to investigate this a little bit more. That's what I think needs to happen. Where the outgoing council, we shouldn't be making this kind of a decision tonight. It doesn't look to me as though Ms. Parry has earned the luxury of having a family plan or that she's, she may or may not be actually doing the work that we're actually using taxpayer dollars to pay her for right now. So I, after everyone has spoken, I will make a motion to table.
Mr. President.
Please not right away at the appropriate time so we can speak, if that's okay.
Please.
If we can all have a chance to speak.
Yes, after everybody has spoken, yes.
I was going to go again, but if somebody didn't.
Council President.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm leaning towards Councilman Gillette's suggestion, mainly because I know there's a lot of assumptions, you know? We don't know, and I would hate to make a decision on something that you just don't know. It seems like a coincidence, a day and a half, you're calling, so we say it's because of that, but do we know for a fact that is, did she say?
Yes.
Because I don't have benefits, okay? And, and we don't know, it, when it's a remote position, you might, you don't know exactly whether she's working or not, and I think that's something that we would need to verify prior to making a decision. So I would be leaning towards tabling myself.
Yes.
Council President, just, Councilwoman Gonzalez, I, I agree with you, that's why she has turned in slips. It's never been verified, but they've always been paid. So it's never, it wasn't that we didn't verify it and then didn't pay it, she was paid for everything she submitted. So I agree with you, though, it, it would be good to verify what's been going on, but she's never missed any of her pay.
Is there, has any, has there been any success in verifying or validating what she is saying she's doing while at home?
I'll let the director answer if she can.
Well, I can tell you, I could not have gotten tax bills out without Elise. I know she works with her department with...
Okay, so she may be doing just communications with others in the department, answering questions, responding to questions from the public or taxpayers who have questions or challenges about their assessment.
Correct, and I know, I think she has dealt with the law department as well on some lawsuits and some...
But in, in any case, when a person comes in to file an appeal, they file it with the staff downstairs, not with her. And my challenge here is, without a full-time tax assessor, there is a statutory right in state law to simply ignore the appeal, and it becomes a de facto rejection or denial. in state law to simply ignore the appeal and it becomes a de facto rejection or denial. But we passed an ordinance that says that's not good enough for the people in One Sock that were taxpayers and that the tax assessor must reply in writing whether to accept or deny the appeal. I suspect that that has not been done. Would that be a correct assessment?
The first round, she, she did work from home and got the, and, and I think denied all, almost.
In writing?
I believe the staff did the letters.
Oh, okay. No, it's good to hear. I mean, I just, I, I know they can do it legally, but I just don't believe in not telling people that they're being denied and informing them of what their other appeal rights are to, to the assessment board review. And the other part of this then becomes whether or not she shows up for hearings. Were the hearings held anyway?
No, we had to cancel them because we did not want to go forward without somebody on the city side to...
Out of, out of the 10 previous hearings that were held by the assessment board when they met, eight of them she did not appear at, and yet the board held its meeting, heard testimony and acted according to their beliefs with the information they had available to them. And I just, I just wonder if it was prudent to cancel the meeting rather than just hold it, gather testimony and let the board make a decision for themselves.
Well, unfortunately, as you know, in speaking to the previous board members who were in those hearings when the assessor did not show, they were almost every time forced to take the appellant's appraisal.
Right.
Because there was nobody to counter. So if, if as the assessor, you set the value at X and the appellant says it's Y and the board has nobody to listen to but the Y, that's where they settle. So it's always a loss for the city. So the prudent thing was decided to not have the hearing.
They can, except they do have the right, if they feel it's excessive, that they would deny also, and it would be forcing them into a superior court choice for the appellant. But I, in, with all of that said, I'm still left with the conclusion that, as Councilman Souci said, there's nobody banging on our door to become the tax assessor, and I don't expect that for some time. So she is what we have, as limited as that service is and as offensive it is that she doesn't even come up to City Hall for a few hours at all. That may change now that you're leaving and her mayor is coming back. But I don't know that. I think she may be accommodated at home and it's possible that more work will be done. I don't know. And frankly, the difficulty here is that the tax assessor works for the finance director. The tax assessor doesn't work for the mayor in technical terms. Everybody works for the mayor. But in reality, the day-to-day, the questions that come, the questions that come from the tax assessor in my office come to me. They don't go to the ma, the town administrator. Because the decision, the first level of decision-making on those matters rests with me, not with the town administrator. And if I believe it's something that should go higher up, I bring it there. If I don't, I make a decision and we deal with it and then notify the parties about the decision. But in any case, this is all we have. So though I find the situation offensive and really revolting, I think I understand why it exists, and I don't think it's about to change, quite frankly. I think there's very specific reasons that tax assessors come here and find that they can't do their job properly because of interference and their, or restraints on their ability to do the job. And as a result, people come here and leave quickly. People come here and insist on doing the right thing and are shown the door. And people apply here, take a look around, talk to other assessors who have been here and make a decision not to come. It is not, it is a very bad thing for the city to have this happen. It's a struggle that cannot be allowed to continue. And frankly, I don't know how to overcome it without changing the tenor of the office and how it operates under the supervision that's provided right now. Not this now, but in terms of within the last several years. So I'm going to support this very reluctantly, or if it's tabled, I will support tabling it, just knowing that tabling puts it in the hands of the new council, who will have to consider some sort of accommodation. But from the legal perspective, the reason we have to do this is an ordinance for the public's interest, is that our code of ordinances says healthcare benefits are not allowed for people working less than 30 hours. This is a 19-hour position, and the only way we can waive the requirements of an ordinance is with an ordinance specifically waiving those requirements, and that's what this is for. So being put between a rock and a hard place, I would extract myself by saying we need to do this because we need to have somebody available to answer the phone calls, deal with the questions, guide the process through to the finance director. Though a lot of work, a lot of critical work in terms of whether it's physical inspections that the assessor should be doing, dealing with some of the larger taxpayers that the assessor should be doing directly, and working on software issues that the assessor should be working on aren't getting done. But whatever is getting done is getting done. So if I'm put against the wall to make a decision, I would say yes, knowing that we really have nothing else to go with at this point. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the council members who want to take other action, unless Councilwoman Sierra had something you wanted to say, because you're the only one that hasn't spoken for the first time.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Well, Mr. President, just one more time, I'm sorry. Yeah, just, I think you were saying, your, your words, I think we just need to think here, I mean, for the good of our community. I mean, we should, I, I support you, you know, saying that we should get this passed and, and then deal with it. I mean, then, you know, we, we'll deal with it at another time. The next council will certainly have the opportunity to do that. In the meantime, I always have a question for Christine. If we do this and we lose the, the one person that we have as an assessor, does that put us in, in good, in good stead?
I need, I need some, I need somebody at least to go to with big questions and...
It doesn't, it puts us in a precarious situation. And why would we want to do that to ourselves? I mean, right now, leaving, we're so close to it, get it done, and then, you know, the, the process can be, can be handled at another time. I'm certainly, if we did this and we lose the one person that's doing that job for us, I think we'd, we'd all feel pretty badly about it, but thank you.
Council President?
Mayor?
I think you should pass it. Give it second passage, give her healthcare and move on.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilman Canoyar?
Quick for the second time. Director, when did the bills go out roughly?
They went out, that August?
Yeah.
Probably.
So August. And, and let me be very clear. Ms. Parry is very capable, and I know she was doing work, and I talked to her during the budget process and all that. My concern is, and I'm frankly, I'm satisfied where we are at the moment, I wanted to force a discussion about this because, again, Ms. Parry is very capable, but from my perspective, we need somebody that's more committed to the job, okay? We need somebody that, you know, I, I do have a real problem with somebody a day and a half before saying, "I'm not coming in because you haven't gotten me my family healthcare yet," despite clear intention of getting it done. I was disappointed in that. I thought it was frankly unprofessional. But I do recognize that Ms. Parry is a capable individual, but something's got to be done and we can't continue to rely on, and I'm afraid sometimes as a matter of convenience, we just kind of kick the can down the road. We don't force the issue. So I will, I'll stop there. If there's a tabling, I'll be happy to support that. If you guys think this is the right thing to do, I'll be supportive.
And, and for the record, just one more last comment. We do, we do have, we do have a couple of people in this city hall working under a 75-day rule, I believe, whether it's in the assessor's office at some, for some part of the year. And I don't know if that's going to continue next year. And in purchasing, we have a retiree working in a 75-day rule. I'm not sure where else, but there are very limited resources available to help, and we do need a full-time tax assessor. But as I said, whether we pass this now or we pass it later, or if the next council has to deal with it, the next council has to deal with the questions that arise here tonight, which have to do with what are we getting for the 70 bucks an hour plus family health coverage, subject to copay? And, and is, is that value there and is it well documented as to what is done in terms of service to the city? Because phone calls to the staff, I guess you could legitimately claim that you were dealing with issues associated with that, but it's a very hard thing to document unless the staff that's here in the office is documenting the timing of those phone calls and the time spent. It's a very difficult thing to do. It's possible, but it's a very difficult thing to do. And the next council's going to have to come to terms with the fact that we don't have a full-time tax assessor and we have to come to a, a meeting of the minds with the administration about how to solve that problem, you know, that must be solved. You just, this will be third year. We're in our third year without a full-time tax assessor of any consequence in terms of time, and this can't go on. So whoever wants to make the next move, make it now.
Mr. President?
Councilman Gillette?
Yeah, if I was to vote on this right now, I would be voting no, but I'm going to make a motion to table.
Motion to table by Councilman Gillette. Is there a second? Not hearing a second, tabling motion fails for lack of a second. So back to the ordinance. Any final last comments? If not, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Canoyar?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
No.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Souci?
Yes.
President Ward?
Yes. And the ordinance passes five to one. New business?
Council President, before we get to new business?
Canoyar?
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda for discussion purposes pursuant to 42466B, overall general law, city property taxes and Vision Government Solutions.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Canoyar, seconded by Councilman Sierra, Councilwoman Sierra. Any discussion? Hearing then all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You guys have it? Councilman Canoyar?
So again...
For purposes only.
Yep. So I just want to address and talk about it the last couple of meetings, and I'll talk about it again. The, as we all know, hope we all know, we have an issue with the tax, the tax bills that went out in so much as there was a massive shift within the levy, the total levy, from single-family properties to multifamily properties, twos, threes, fours and above. And the total levy only went up about half, less than half a million dollars. So it wasn't a spending problem that we had. It was an, it was an issue of how we allocated the total levy. And the single-family property owners, of which I'm one of them and I benefited, thank you, the total levy went down almost about 1.3 million, a little more than 1.3 million on a gross level before homesteads. And that is even after adding additional 35 units. So if you just take 35 additional single-family units and assume an average price, and I'm being generous here, 200,000, you'd think the assessment, the, the bill would go up $7 million. In fact, the total went down 1.3 million. And then you go to, you look at the, the multifamilies and they get hit very hard, they went up 3.2 million. So singles came down 1.3 million, multis went up 3.3 million. And the issue, and the reason I brought this up again is because the former mayor brought it up, the issue is, has nothing to do with Vision. Vision Government Solutions was chosen to do the appraisals, the reassessments for the city. Vision had done our assessments, if anybody ever paid attention, for years and years and years and years. We used Northeast for a short period of time. Northeast came in and did it in 2017, and we went back to Vision. The problem is not that the city council unanimously decided to go with Vision. The problem is that this city council was never provided any meaningful data to do any meaningful analysis to make the best decisions in terms of the tax rates and the homestead exemptions. And frankly, it's no different, with all due respect, to what we went through with the police contract. Because if anybody's going to be honest up here, they'll say, "We didn't get any information or any good data when we talked about the police contract." And that's why we ended up where we are. So I just want to disabuse certain people of this notion that the problem we have, that this new council unfortunately or fortunately is going to have to face, has got nothing to do with the decision to go with Vision Government Solutions. Sure, there's, you can find some things that, that you can challenge in terms of some of the stuff they did. That's normal course. That's, 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 it's noise. The real issue is that the city council was never provided any data or information. We received this budget book with the first reference to what the appraisals, what the assessments, the movements on May 31st. That's when we got that, May 31st. And the former mayor, as I said before, highlighted how the single families increased from an average of 174,000 to 275,000 and said it was a good thing. That was, that was something to be happy about, and that's fine. The problem is, we were never provided any information on the multifamilies or the commercial properties. And within that whole cauldron, there was a lot of stuff going on that nobody was made aware of, and in part, I would suggest, because we continue into year three here without a full-time, let alone a part-time that shows up, tax assessor. And again, Ms. Parry's more than capable, but she's not here. She chooses not to be here, and that's fine. But it's a problem. And I'll ask my colleague, you asked and I asked for an analysis back in September. Have you received anything since then? No. So just want to be clear, no, despite being promised. That's a problem. And it's a problem my colleagues over here are going to face very early on. When you ask for information, it's not always forthcoming, and I don't want you to ever forget that you're not, you're no longer a member of the public, it's not an access to public records. You guys are going to be elected paid officials, and you need to make fact-based decisions, and you're entitled to information when you request it. You shouldn't have to jump through hoops, you don't need to ask for permission, and you're not bullying anybody when you ask for a second time and a third time. So just be prepared for that. So look, we have a real problem here. I think it's going to get ugly fast, to be very honest with you. I think there are going to be some, some parties in this community that are going to take some steps that are probably necessary to force the issue. But it's all very fixable and solvable, but you need to be honest about it. You've got to stop the little, the rhetoric about, oh, it's because the council decided to go with Vision appraisal. Nothing to do with that whatsoever. Zero. Has everything to do with the fact that tax rates were set, and keep in mind, the administration's one recommended the tax rates. This council bumped them up a little bit because we had a budget that frankly was an election-year budget. It didn't have funding for the seniors, it didn't provide any additional funding for the school department, didn't have certain, a whole bunch of people didn't have raises, yet we're being told we're losing people due to low salaries, et cetera. So we had an election-year budget, this council fixed it to the tune of about $489,000. That's noise. That's just, that's just white noise in, in, in relation to the whole problem here. The problem is that the residential rate was put down too low, the commercial rate wasn't brought down enough in relation to the increase in the assessed values on the commercial properties, residential properties. So there, there are levers to be moved and played with, but you can't do that when you're flying blind. So very simple, nothing to do with who the, who did the appraisal, that's minor, minor stuff. Everything to do with the lack of information, and there's going to be work to be done. And I'd be more than happy to talk to any of my, the new folks coming on anytime if, if, if you have a desire. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. New business?
22066, an amendment of code of ordinances, City of One Sock, Rhode Island, Chapter 17, entitled traffic. 17, entitled Traffic.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Seconded by Councilman Canoia.
Mr. President.
Discussion. Councilman Susie.
Yeah. Just to present this a little bit, this ordinance is put in place specifically to help, I think there's a woman that had spoken earlier today, tonight at this meeting, to put the first row of parking at the Mullen Lot specifically for the retail establishments that are right in that vicinity across the street on Main Street. To me, these are the issues we're having. These are good problems to have, meaning that we're seeing more activity on the Main Street area, the schools in place, and because of that, certainly there's a lot of jockeying for these spots. And this is just a small Band-Aid right now to at least address those retailers that are asking for it and need some relief. Certainly, I think we'll be talking about this for a long time, because there's going to be, obviously going to need to be some more long-term solutions to parking as we get busier on Main Street. And again, a good problem to have, but something that has to be addressed. But I hope we can have the support of everybody on this one. Thank you.
Council President.
Councilman Canoia.
David, Councilman Susie, thanks for bringing this forward. I will definitely support it. Do you know how many spaces will be earmarked in total? My question is, are we doing enough?
That's what I said, it's a Band-Aid, I think, a little bit. You're right.
Okay. There's a building right across the street you could knock down and make some space. So just keep that in mind as you go forward.
Council President.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I don't know exactly how many spaces are going to be allotted, but I have spoken, I know there was a woman here that spoke earlier, but I spoke to Trends, Timeless, Main Street Cafes, Oceans, they're all having the same issues. I spoke to Director Gillette, and he actually approached, began a conversation with the school, because behind the school, there's an additional, like six spots approximately, correct? You want to talk a little bit on what the findings were with that?
Yes, I did speak to Mike DeBruyce. So in the back there, there's some construction equipment. So we weren't sure if the construction was complete back there and was safe to go back there. The biggest issue, from what I understand, is coming out of that parking lot, taking that shop, left-hand turn is a blind spot there. Try some lighting. Hopefully, they, obviously, it's private property. We can only encourage them to go there, but they were receptive to anything like that.
Because we were thinking that if we can at least, you know, if they, if those become available, some of the staffing can, from the school, can park there and alleviate at least like six more spots.
Okay. Anyone else?
Councilman.
Director.
So I've observed, you know, that problem myself, but I've also noticed the lot to the, to the left of the Old Heritage Coffee Shop is frequently not used, okay? So what you have is a problem of everybody kind of congesting in that lot across the street. Nobody wants to take a few steps and utilize another lot as well. So I don't think there's a lack of parking spaces there. I think there's a lack of willingness to walk. So I don't know if you're familiar with, if you go to Providence much, but very seldom you ever get to park right in front of where you're going. Often, you have to, you know, you have to walk a little. And I understand that may be a problem for, you know, handicap individuals or whatever, but not everybody's handicapped. So before we go, you know, designating spots, I do agree with, you know, the loading zone in the front there. I think that should be enforced by police. And, you know, we could paint that curb yellow and expand the striping there, but before we go, you know, designating spots there, I'd like to review with the council exactly what you're going to do there.
Yeah, Mr. President? I'm sorry. I was going to just respond to something on that.
Go ahead, please.
No, so I think by putting some designated spots for these retails, right, it's going to make other people maybe start noticing that lot on the other side, which isn't a big lot. It's obviously, you know, it's not a big area. And I've also driven by many times where it is full. But at least it will get people thinking that they're, you know, to start looking. At least those retail people, those people that visit those shops will have that prime parking, and that's what we want to do for our retail people, right? I mean, the school is one thing where people, these kids or younger people can walk, you know, and it's not a big deal to them, you're right. But for these shops, some of their clients, it's, like she said, and I agree, that places you drive by and you don't even want to think about parking, so you just drive away, and you've not helped these shops out. So I think it's a minor thing. I mean, it would be basically, you know, for retail establishments, however you want to word it, I think it's a good small beginning to help, something that they're asking us to do, and that's something I think we have to respond to.
Yeah, I think we need to expand that loading zone area in the front there, and then, you know, we need to enforce it, okay?
That's the.
They just got a raise, drive by and enforce it. You know what I mean? If you see somebody there, throw them out. So, but I'll meet with anybody next week or whatever, or later this week, and we'll review what we want to do there.
If I may, I have to agree with the director. Just pulling up what was clearly a random picture on Google Earth, there's that parking lot full, and the parking lot on the other side of Heritage Coffee Shop, you refer to it as, is virtually empty. But on top of that, remembering back in the day when my father was a dentist across the street from here in that building that should be torn down, they parked, everybody that worked in that building parked behind the building. Because you didn't do, you didn't take up space on Main Street. And there are, there are parking lots, and again, I don't know where the ownership is and how much of a problem it would be, but if you go behind what is officially, I guess, Kresge Building, that's where the gym is, there's a whole parking lot back there that's virtually empty every day. You would have to walk down the hill. There's a parking lot behind the Old Wensocket Institution for Savings that's across the street that's virtually empty, I'm sure, every day.
Right.
Yes, you have to walk down a hill down to Main Street, but if you're in the, in the school, say, to work for the full day, if you're working in other businesses in Main Street, those are the places you park out of consideration for your customers, so your customers can have the vacant spaces. You're talking 12 or 13 spaces along the road on Main Street, and they're critical. And I wonder, too, never mind the staff at the school, what about the students at the school? Where are they going to park? Where are they expected to park? Because there's classes going on there that are scheduled. I just looked at some not run nine to three. There's other times of day, there's evening hours, but more so for the daytime hours. Students are going to have to have a fine place to park. And that's where something needs to be considered for the people who are working in the businesses, whether it's educators or business people, to have alternative locations that may require them to walk 200 yards. Maybe down a small hill to get, or up a small hill to get to the parking lot where their car is. And again, I don't know how that works with the private property and whether there would be a problem there, but I think it's something to consider. I don't mind designating these spots, because it's always seemed attractive to me to have people turning into a parking lot to face the businesses they're considering going to, or having it along the same side of the street they're on. And this wouldn't be a bad thing, but I don't think it's a solution. But it's a good start. But people have to work out solutions, because that Main Street had a lot more buildings and a lot more businesses, and there were still cars coming through there all the time, and the parking was generally done up on top of the hill and other places. And something needs to be done to make it attractive enough for the customers, so that the people doing business there park somewhere convenient for the customers. But I'll support this certainly under these circumstances. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Councilman Canoia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Gillette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra.
Yes.
Councilman Susie.
Yes.
President Ward.
Yes. And the ordinance passes for the first time, six to nothing.
22067, transferring funds from contingencies to human services.
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Seconded by Councilman Canoia. Discussion. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. How did I confuse that? Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Discussion.
Council President.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So this is to help the Wensocket Warriors. I want to congratulate all their teams. Their football team made it all the way to the Super Bowl. The seven of their students or athletes made it to All-Stars Nationals in Florida, and we have two cheerleading teams, the 10Y and the 13Y, for a total of 38 kids that had about 17 days to come up with funding to travel to Florida and represent in the Nationals. So I'm hoping, I know we have other counselors that are sponsoring this, and I just want to wish them the best, and I just love any time that we can reward the efforts of our young students when they make such great accomplishments.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Gillette.
Madam Clerk, would you put my name on this legislation, please?
Will do.
Thank you.
Anything else? I, too, want to congratulate those who are going down to compete in the national competition. It's sometimes only a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and for them to have this opportunity and for us to be able to assist them in getting there is an important part of being a part of the community, so I will support this, and let us move on to a roll call.
Councilman Canoia.
Excuse me, yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Gillette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra.
Yes.
Councilman Susie.
Yes.
President Ward.
Yes. And the ordinance passes. Best of luck to the members who will be traveling to Orlando.
22068, ordinance of the City of Wensocket approving the financing of the replacement of the Manville Road pump station and all attended expenses, and approving the issuance of wastewater system revenue bonds and notes therefore in amount not to exceed $2,100,000.
Motion to pass.
Motion approved by Councilman Gillette.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Canoia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Gillette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra.
Yes.
Councilman Susie.
Yes.
President Ward.
Yes.
22069, an ordinance increasing the city's opera budget to purchase fire station generators from $90,000 to $92,692.18.
Motion approved, Jim.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Canoia, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Canoia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Gillette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra.
Yes.
Councilman Susie.
Yes.
President Ward.
Yes, and the ordinance passes, six to nothing.
22070, ordinance of the City of Wensocket approving the financing of the repair of the brick facade of the existing gravity thickener tank at the Wensocket Regional Wastewater Facility and all attended expenses, and approving the issuance of wastewater system revenue bonds and notes therefore in amount not to exceed $200,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Second.
By.
Sierra.
Councilwoman Sierra. Any discussion? Hearing that, roll call, please.
Councilman Canoia.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Gillette.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra.
Yes.
Councilman Susie.
Yes.
President Ward.
Yes, and the ordinance passes for the first time, six to nothing.
22R156, authorizing the cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to pass.
Motion approved by Councilman Gillette. Seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Discussion, I'll just chime in with the fact that this is a cancellation for taxes totaling If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it.
22R157, authorizing the administration to execute a memorandum of agreement by and between Elizabeth Kerrigan, Rhode Island Council 94, Local 3851, and the City of Wensocket.
Motion to approve.
Council President, before you move forward with this, I want to table this until the next meeting, because I have a couple of questions I want to forward to the union.
Well, okay, then I will, if it's the desire of the council to grant that, I'll ask for a motion to table to the next regular council meeting.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So moved.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. It's tabled.
22R158, authorizing the chief of police to sign and enter an agreement with Exxon Enterprises, Inc.
Council President. If I may, can you table this one as well? Evidently, the contract itself didn't make the agenda. So the attachment to the resolution is not on the website.
Oh, yes.
It's only a resolution so the new council can take it up at a special meeting, because I understand it is kind of time-sensitive. It doesn't have to be done tonight.
Is the contract prepared for consideration?
This is for the, this is for the cameras, body cameras.
I mean, we had a work session to discuss this.
Yeah.
And it was tabled before, but it's because of concerns over the contract, and that was rectified.
Right. Well, I mean, I still have concerns, but it's not attached to the resolution.
No, I know, I know.
We can't vote on it tonight.
It's a technical matter. We can't vote on something we can't see.
So the new council will have to take it up.
So I'm only asking because I want to get a little specific about the tabling, whether it's going to be to a regular meeting, but I know we're discussed, there's a discussion right now of having a meeting on the 12th, and I don't know whether the new council is interested in doing that, so I guess we'll just do it as a general motion to table to a future date.
It'll be up to the new council, the new solicitor, but it's, it could be at a special meeting, it doesn't have to be regular.
Okay. Motion to table by Councilman Canoia. Seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. And it is tabled.
22R159, authorizing the administration to execute a memorandum of agreement by and between Lori Flanagan, Rhode Island Council 94, Local 670, and the City of Wensocket.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Discussion for the record? We're not going to put that on the record. Councilman Canoia?
Yeah, this is just, this is just following up on the resolution we passed at the last meeting for Ms. Flanagan's stipend that we made official and legal, and this is, since she's in the union, we do have a MOA to go along with it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution is approved.
22R160, City of Wensocket acknowledges receipt every $25,000 donation from St. Joseph Catholic Church specifically to fund the construction of a cooling station at Dunn Park.
Motion to pass.
Motion approved by Councilman Gillette, seconded by Councilman Canoia. Discussion.
Council President.
Mayor.
Can I bring an attachment that should be with that? So Council President, I was contacted by the pastor of St. Joseph's Church. He said that the parish had a desire to donate some sum of money. We didn't know what the amount would be, but they were looking to give some money, and as they said, they wanted to reach across the city and help other portions of the city. Came to mind your suggestion for installing a cooling station of some sort at the Dunn Park area, and I mentioned that to Father Ryan from St. Joseph's, and he thought it was a great idea. And I thought I was going to pick up a check for five to 10,000, and when he handed it to me, it was a $25,000 check. I asked him for a letter to accompany the donation, and he provided that to us as well. The finance director is going to use this letter to set up a restricted account so that the funds will be used exclusively for, first, a cooling station at Dunn Park, and if there are additional funds left, that they can then be used for a cooling station, maybe at Globe Park, and then use up all of the money. But I just wanted to explain the reasoning and how the money came about, and the acknowledgement that St. Joseph's Church on Mendon Road is trying to reach across the city and lend a hand to the Falmouth families that might want some relief during the summer months.
Thank you. I'm going to start this conversation myself, because I was the one that thought of the possibility of a cooling station at Dunn Park when they were replacing all of the playground equipment at Dunn Park, and it occurred to me that a good use of ARPA funds, especially because it relates to health and safety, mostly about health, and because Dunn Park is pretty much the furthest distance you're going to get from World War II Veterans Memorial Park Splash Park and may not be readily available to residents of the Fairmount area, and specifically the Veterans Memorial Housing Development, and the fact that the housing authority really does not have a high-quality playground area designated for their kids there. They all go to the park, and they should to engage in recreational activities with other members of the community in the neighborhood. And it thought occurred to me to do that, and it was not readily accepted by the administration. And so, I thank the parish and the pastor for considering this. I still think it's a good idea. It's nothing more than a press-the-button misting station that they sell commercially to municipalities across the country to be used during the hotter months so that when kids are playing games or on the playground area and they're getting heated and need some cooling, they just go push the button, and a mist of water comes out and cools them off. And I think as a second choice, probably the most logical one, being that far end of the city, would be Globe Park if there is available funds to do a second one. And so I want to thank the church and the parish for making the contribution and for thinking of the needs of the community citywide, and hope that something can be done to actually make this happen. I think it would be beneficial to those residents in that area, especially the children, and frankly, the parents of the children who were there oftentimes watching them and helping them out as they play. So, thank you, and I'll be supporting this. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Six to nothing.
Twenty-two R one sixty-one, authorizing the Public Works Director to enter into a contract with Ed Wojcik, Architect LTD, for architectural services for the design of a new water division building.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoyer.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillette. Discussion.
Just for the record, this is the design of the building to, this is at Roy Avenue, right?
Yes.
That we're talking about? Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it.
Twenty-two R one sixty-two, a resolution authorizing the fire chief to purchase three cola diesel generators with accessories from Kraft Power Corporation for a total of $92,692.18 utilized in the city's ARPA funds.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoyer.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra and Gonzalez. Discussion. Hearing none. All those with favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. The resolution is approved, and we have no more business, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Canoyer.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. And for the last time for this council, this meeting is adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.